Good afternoon, I'd like to call this Monday, August 11th Committee of the Whole meeting to order. Would you join us in the quick?
I believe you are to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go through old business first. What's known do you have today?
The first thing I have is Public Works is requesting to hire three seasonal procurement person facilities system to help out during the winter at Cary Park in the different isoliness. So I'm just requesting to add that to our basically council agenda. Do you have any questions? It's what they did last year.
But was it two like two?
It was three. They did.
Trade up being three?
Yeah, it did. And they, the third one came on, they were pretty free, the third one came on a little bit later. Maybe about three to four weeks after the other two, but.
Is there?
They all made the motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Bolden?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Kayler. Any discussion?
No.
More discussion. Call a question?
Aye.
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 Okay. Yeah, I think you can. The other thing I wanted to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The question was about Councilwoman, Bowler is online, but he cannot vote. He can weigh in with suggestions and ideas we can, for taking the vote.
The other item I have is that the Public Works Director Ted Rowkop will be retiring effective September 1. So I will have the retirement letter on the agenda for Monday. But I will also be with your approval requesting council direction on how you'd like to proceed with that vacancy. And would you have any additional questions or conversation, or you just want to wait and vote city council with that?
Uh, just something you want to take to council, or would be like some discussion?
I, well, she asked if I had any plans, yeah.
My plan? Public Works, right?
Yep, yeah, of course, yeah. All the talk we have of having the cut pass and spending too much money and having too many people. I recommend that we do not fill the Public Works Director position and have those responsibilities divvy up between the Assistant Public Director at this time, the utility supervisor, the working informant at the water shop, and city administration order to get it, to get the job done. And of course, the assistance of our engineering company. That's just my thoughts.
Any thoughts from you, Sheri?
Not on that particular. I don't know if you, did you want it to go to city council for that meeting then? Or would this suffice for that?
I, I.
It's gotta go to council, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it's gotta go to council because Will Alpert accept his resignation there. And we can, I just wanted everybody to know where my thoughts are. I moved that.
I think that's a good idea, Pete. And then after we accept his resignation, move forward. Make that known to the council that that's a good idea.
Okay. And then is that something you'll just continue to monitor, like through the Public Works Committee? How, how that process is going into me and month by month basis, so check in?
Yeah.
Okay. If that's how everyone decides to move forward?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if you want to motion to the council?
Well, we need a motion on how you'd like to order, whether you want that specific motion, or if you want just that we would be asking council for direction on that vacancy and you have that further discussion there. That's any recommendation out of this group on how you want it on the agenda, if you want it ordered on the agenda.
That's all, because they might have different ideas and they all can share. But, yeah, the right thing is discussion about how we proceed.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to proceed to the city council.
I'll second your action.
Second, number?
Any other discussion?
Aye.
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 In follow-up to last month's meeting, I did distribute the Arizona Safe Time Policy. That was approved by council to department heads to share with her employees. I should have the LELS contract, the lease contract for you at Monday, City Council meeting. Review approval and so forth, how you see. And then I did apply for that Minnesota Ocean Safety Plan. So I love that application. I had, I have some.
It's important.
Any other questions or any other questions?
Councilor, anything?
No.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Bowler's not here today, so you have your rental licensing and licensing and monthly report in your packet to look at. See where he's at. I'm sure he's busy with a lot of things. Also, light monthly report will be in there. Any questions on either one of those? Building Official? Okay, he's up today too, so we have your Building Official monthly report. He's been built around town, so that's good. What they're expecting, permit and fees. Any questions on those? New business. We're gonna discuss the cleanup options for the property located at 2020 11 Avenue. Is Chelsea up there?
Yep, I'm here.
Go ahead.
I think Bill Larson's son may be in the audience as well, but Walt, maybe heads up last week that it looked like cleanup was occurring on the property. I went back and drove by there and it is. The son of Bill is cleaning it up and making progress. So I don't know if the council wants to continue to have discretion on it. Or if I just monitor it and bring it back if something else happens, but it looks like it's gonna be cleaned up.
Okay, yeah, he's here. We'll have him come off and address council a bit, let us know where he's at. Is that okay, Chelsea?
You'll have to see Mike when you start.
Absolutely.
Call the speaker by any means. I suggest, so we.
Just give us your name real quick.
Mike Larson?
Yep.
We've been down there since, after his last four years, including July 6th, we've been down there pretty much every day. I've missed a couple of cases or four events or whatever else, but spent a couple, I had a full night job. Phil's down there every day. We're feeling more to the time where we can handle most, he's been down there quite a bit. We've moved, it has got to take a few friends, we moved thirty-two thousand plus pounds of steel out of there. Six yard bouncer for the trans and all three control trigger will go down there. It's a huge process, you know. We're, we're working on it. I just wanted to tell you, I mean, if you guys thought we'll bring in an Art Roberts costume, I'll go along. And I don't think you want to go without all your money forward. It's gonna take, it's not, it's not gonna happen.
Questions?
I, no, I just like, I've also been by there numerous times. Just like this, I have to be driving around, but I can see noticeable difference in making progress. I, yeah, I think it's great.
I mean, it's gonna take some time.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I guess going by, you also notice how much it is gonna take time, but I think as long as we're making progress, that we just continue on here with what we can build.
So I believe we approved this, right?
We, we did.
To apply?
We were gonna look into it, apply, and we're gonna, I don't know Chelsea, have a chance to look at it. And we, I guess we approved us to look into applying, actually applying, and I think the city administrator has some information for us, and Jason has some explaining if we need to.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, I, I do apologize, I, I did this meeting on Monday, but I, you know, watched the video, got caught up on, on happenings, and in looking at this, talking with Chelsea, talking with Dr. Public Works, understanding, there's three different sections of this grant that, you know, are, are pieces of replacing the existing R twenty-two refrigeration system for Cary Park. We would fall under the indirect refrigeration system is what we have there, and that's to, by program about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is a fifty-fifty match.
And that's what I saw too.
Yep, so it's a direct fifty-fifty match, and therefore, it, it's gonna depend on, um, in talking with Public Works, Public Works Committee, the city doesn't have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar match. So if, if this is gonna be something there, it's gonna be applied for, I believe it should be the Recreation Hockey Association that should be applying for this. The local government unit, we can support this, and we can be the fiscal agent for it, but they would have to show that they are willing or have the match of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Or this board needs to direct the city staff to find the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar match.
Yes.
If we're wanting to move forward.
And that, what's the questions we had?
Yeah.
Is if we're, but is it, are we, they, they can't get it unless the city were to match it if we go that way, right? We can't get the grant unless you got a match.
Correct, because in the source and use of funds for the project, that's part of the application, you need to tell them where your match is coming from. So if we don't have that, we as local government should be applying, because we can't complete the source of funds for match. Jason, you have anything further?
Go ahead.
Uh, there's another question we had, and I got my member Drew Fresh today at the Public Works Committee, is that the cost is a million and some dol- and it was for basically the refrigeration system, so even with five hundred thousand, we're still looking at another seven hundred thousand from somewhere. Correct?
Yeah. Counselor Holden?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Because as was indicated earlier, um, that the project to do just the refrigerant, we probably could get close to that with the five hundred thousand. However, it's all the other mechanical pieces as a whole to run that system that you need to replace as well, with the compressors. That's separate from the refrigeration system itself, that needs to be replaced, and that's what we're really struggling in getting and piecing this compressor together to keep it running. And so that's why just the match for that piece of it is not gonna be needed, the dollars needed for the project.
So I think they, they're gonna have, the rec, will probably have to look at some, maybe not, maybe not apply this time around. I'm sure it comes every year or a couple years or something, till they have someone that can help.
Yep.
Yeah. You guys alright with that?
But that, and I'd like to direct, if the city administrator could just reach out to rec and let him know that this is what we decided, and this is...
Well, this, this, this is one guy we'll have to counsel to, I think we only want to look into it, right?
To look, apply to look into it? But we, we could, no, we didn't apply, we could bring it back just for information, this, I think we should do that.
Yes, and make official action at council, yes, yep.
Good?
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second, so bring it back for discussion at the city council.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Bring it by Counselor Holden?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, any other business, and do you guys have any?
I do, I have, um, thank you.
Ready for a turn?
Um, we have Ted Anderson, he is our agent for Northern Reliable Insurance. He has been working directly with me with, um, the League of Minnesota Cities on the van shell insurance. And if we could invite him up to give us an update, that would be awesome.
Absolutely. It's very interesting.
Love, Counselor.
Welcome. Thank you.
And Betty, thank you for inviting me. Betty and I have been working on this for a long time, from Spain wheels, I think that would be the right word to say. And frustrated at times, but we did get an email today from Chris Ito, who's been our adjuster on this, and he's been frustrated at times to deal with. And Betty and I, I can, I think they speak to both of us, and we've learned a lot about the process of how the League of Minnesota Cities, those are claims were sometimes at a snail's pace, um, because they recover a lot of, all of them, so, and there have been a lot of spunes, I don't know, that's been an excuse that Mr. Robinson's been, and it's not an excuse, it's unstated by him, but uh, what has happened so far, um, there's been, uh, the total cost of the loss right now is at seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty nine cents. It costs a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars to demo the van shell. There have been hazardous testing that was done for twenty-one hundred dollars, and the total cost of twelve dollars. And then they worked with a, a company to do recreate the building, and that's been probably the, the, the one item that's caused as much delay as anything, is to come up with the replacement cost for the van shell. And we want, we sat on the same footprint, because the foundation was there for a, a long time, and until you guys decide if we're taking that out of there. And we're, we just don't have that number, but talking to Chris Ito last week, um, right now, he's ready to issue a check to the city for five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. And that's an estimate, no more dollars coming, because the company that they've used to do the replacement cost on that footprint, um, was to bring that up to the ADA, uh,残疾 disability that could find. And to make those bathrooms, those ur bathrooms, uh, on the same footprint, you ended up with less bathrooms, because they're handicap accessible. Okay, so, and it's so costly to do that. So we're getting that number, definitely not gonna be debated, Betty's gonna take it to the engineering people that she works with, they'll pick it apart, and then we're gonna come and agree on what the final numbers. So it's, this has been a process, I've learned a lot, it's the first time in seventeen years of doing this, of being an agent that, uh, we've had a building done like this.
Tim, I got a question for you.
Yep.
So, does this money have to be spent for another van shell?
No.
That's a question.
No, it's not. Well, to find out what the number is, it should get to that.
Right, yeah.
Right.
You took out the vote pool.
There's a lot of talk around about whether the money has to go for the van shell, or could it be used for something else? And that's why I asked that question.
Yep, no, good question, it's, it's, you can actually, you paid the premiums on it.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm, my job is to get you the most money and get you.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and, uh, I've learned a lot, uh, learned a lot of patience, but we paid as I used to be. But, uh, thank you guys for your patience, because it's not been...
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Thank you, Betty, anytime you've got a question, anytime you want me here, you can run the volume down.
This whole, this whole thing, Tim, was hard on Betty, it was hard on all of us because of the length of time. And it wasn't this council's fault.
Uh, it's, it's...
It goes back to the insurance at League of Cities.
Well, that's, well, it came out of this, you know, um, the League of Minnesota Cities was, was greatly created by Bobby Anderson. It usually, the shared committee created the League of Minnesota Cities. And because back then, you, a city couldn't get insurance.
Okay.
Couldn't get liability insurance, and it wouldn't insure it properly, to the values that you needed to have. And the only way that they did it, they had enough connection around state, you know, the penalties that, they self-insured for a lot of them. That's really how it ended up, and they paid dividends every year since they built.
Okay.
And that's, and, and, uh, it's really not insurance. It's, it's, it's way different than any other commercial insurance that I sell. It's, they just kinda stand on their own thing, and they do their, they process things their own way, they're kinda unique. But they would get really, really good coverage.
Well, I like...
Compared to a lot of commercial.
I like hearing that, um, that you could see where it put us, you know, I gotta ask the question, why is it taking so long? Why is it taking so long? You know, the only answer we could get was that we...
The best example I could get is, you tell me where in the state of Minnesota there was another van shell like that.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no pattern to this.
There's no pattern, so, okay, so now, we're trying to recreate the past, and I, I remember the first set of numbers they gave us. And the company that came up with that used structured, uh, costs for a house, not for a personal building. Can't do that, it's gonna be a lovely building, so.
Yeah.
So there's, I mean, we, it's been one thing, and then another thing, and another thing, and everybody's kinda learning along the way, and it's, you know, talking to Chris Ito, the adjuster, it's been as much at eighteen as it did for us, but we're all kinda learning this one together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, and if you have any questions, feel free to leave a comment, and I'll come back any time if they do.
I appreciate it, Tim.
Thanks for the update, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Tim, I'm glad you talked to us.
Do you, can you follow up with that, Betty? Or you, now you still have some wondering. So we'll get some more, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Good information to go forward, appreciate it. Um, any other business, Counselor? Betty?
No, nothing.
Chelsea, do, do you think you wanna add?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I guess I do have a question, now, that, uh, for Chelsea, um, if she can answer it. Um, when it comes to a municipal project, say like, um, the Ninth Street Project, and, uh, there is a signed notice to proceed, or it's okay to proceed with it, you know, inspired with the project, once we sign that, are we committed to doing it? Are we not?
So we, what do we sign?
Uh, notice to proceed, with, with, I think it was with the engineers?
I'd have to look at it, but it sounds like that could be correct.
Yeah, all right, well, I, I have it, I, I wasn't sure, and I didn't wanna put you on the spot too much, I'll send it to you, and let you take a look. Regarding, cause once that's a case, then, but that's all I want with my help, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, just send it over, and I'll get to you next time.
All right, thanks.
Good? Good? Okay. Uh, last Friday, August eighth, uh, the Mayor Dillon, I met with County Commissioner Shogun and Roach at the airport conference room to discuss the LEC, and, uh, we have a preliminary agreement to go forward. And I'll just give you the highlights, obviously, this has to be vetted by both parties, we have to send this back, if you guys want to, if you guys, but same with the county commissioners, um, so, uh, I'm gonna go from kind of the low stuff to the high stuff, but, uh, so, they have designated, you'll have designated parking for the PD. We've discussed a percentage increase on utilities, now that is according to how much, we don't know how much they use, so they gotta have a year study or more if they were, once they're in there, to see what the cost for utilities. The refurbish is at a hundred and sixty thousand, and that would be a fifty-fifty split between us and the county, uh, where Chief Koschik and anybody else he wants in there, to make sure it's set up the way they want, with a server room and whatever else they need. There needs to be bathrooms update, that will have to be secondary, that'll be later. Three garage bays, um, and the basement area for now, we'll get that, but it'll be somewhat shared space. They're looking at three to five years, they will be entirely out of the building, as the floors that the PD needs, which would be the rest of the garage bays, and then entire basement, if I'm describing that right, 'cause I, I'm a little bit open. The command center will be moved, they will be out of the other bay, you'll have all that. It's fifty thousand per year for twenty years, and ten to twelve thousand of the fifty will go to building upgrades each year. The city will also have the first rate of refusal if the county decides to sell the building. And those are the, those are what we've worked out so far, so, um, we'll get to this group, what, uh, which way you wanna go forward. And obviously, this is just a, it's a rough draft, right, so there's, you know, there's a few things more there that we have to get into the lease agreement and all the legal stuff to go along with it, but I think both parties were agreeable to it, um, we'll see how the county board figures on it, and, um, that's what happened. Any questions?
Well, I wanna thank you, Tim, for all your hard work, and Mayor Dillon too, um, and moving ahead with this, uh, you know, and it, I'm really happy with what you've come up with here. I think it, uh, shows that the county and city can work together for the good of the community, and that's what I was hoping for. And so, I commend you for what you've done, and I'd like to move ahead with this.
Um, also, I know some of the other things we discussed, Chief Koschik and I, and Betty, like the FOBs, all that stuff we're gonna do, we wanna isolate the area, so you have, you, they can't, nobody can come in there unless you authorize it, and they're okay with that, that's, that's gonna be a big part of it. Yeah, you know, things like cleaning and that kinda stuff, I don't know, I'll work, we'll work out whatever you think. Do you want their staff to be in there cleaning, or do you want our, I don't know if we have our own, or what we do there, but, uh, there's nuances such as that that still be worked out, which will include you once this, if this goes forward, with what we do there, so.
Is there a timeline in which this would begin, was that discussed a lot?
As far as...
Like moving?
Twenty twenty-six. That's all, yeah, because they gotta let out the bids for the refurb, if you want that done before we go in there. So this gotta come to ours, we have to agree to it, if that's what we want, county commissioners gotta agree to it, then we have to get Attorney Nelson and, and I will ask you to work out the nuances of the actual agreement, but in the meantime, they're gonna move forward with, lay, putting out the bids for the refurbish. And, uh, so hopefully, and I, I don't know the timeline, when they, you know, it's all, all depends on when they move, right? They're gonna do as much as they can while they're in there, as soon as Sheriff's moving a new building, they can go in and do the the reconfiguration, refurbish of whatever it has there, and, uh, get it to what, what we want, so. I'm just gonna go with twenty twenty-six, and I don't know when, and when they'll be in there, but twenty twenty-six seems to be the best chance.
I have one question.
Yes.
So you said it, um, a certain percent, or a certain number for upgrades, is that like, like build, like improvement, or do we have a cap on like maintenance?
That's, uh, building improvements, right, so...
Okay.
So if you, the fifty that, uh, the city would pay per year, is basically you're paid forty, obviously forty for the general amount, and ten if it's going into a building fund, which they have, for improvements or upgrades to, if the needs of roof or, uh, whatever else is wrong. Uh, for example, um, there will probably be an effort, uh, fire, uh, sprinkler system eventually, um, a bathroom remodeled, that's gonna cost some money, so, to, to become ADA compliant, go ahead, Mr. President.
Sure, so the refurbishing, you know, they're looking at lots, twenty hundred, sixty thousand dollars, you said with a fifty-fifty split.
Yes.
So then, future maintenance, if we're, if they're taking part of our lease and putting away for future billing improvements, there would not be a fifty-fifty split then with those improvements, and that would all be upon the, the landlord to do those improvements?
That is correct, but we did leave the door open for them to ask if we are, we wanna help with any, any, if there's a certain improvement that Chief bring want, you know, or, or a PD decides there's something that we need to change, um, then I think we should be open and wanting to help.
If it's a request, of course.
If it's a request, of course.
Perfect, thank you.
And that's kinda where we left it.
Thank you.
I don't know how we're gonna get that in the lease agreement, but that's what we got, Attorney Nelson.
Do we kinda get a say then in what, what the improvements are?
If it's anything to do with the floors that the PD occupies, yes.
Okay, so the money that they're setting aside for it, it's not, we give it to them and then they decide what improvement, we do kinda get a say in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the main, the main part of it is the big ticket items, a roof or, um, foundation problems, for example, uh, or like the sprinkler system or the bathrooms, it's gonna be a, a major cost. But once that, once they get some estimates, then maybe they'll come back, let's say, well, whatever, whatever we can do to help with, if Chief wants, you know, a certain one, or whatever, we we'll put that. But it's gotta, I, I'd like a motion to date it to council.
You got it.
Okay, Zachary?
Second.
Counselor Holden and Counselor Taylor, Zachary? Any more discussions?
No, I just concur with what like you said, so, so, thank you.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll get to this, we can write up, it's just my scribble right now, but, uh, we'll write up sometime official, with all the stuff on it. It looks a little more official than this. Chief, any questions?
Can you hear me back here?
I can, I don't know if everybody, I can hear you.
No, I, I appreciate just you guys taking the time, we have, now we have a cap that can open days and all. That was the biggest, and we're just, the answer, just I appreciate all the work on it.
They're, well, they did tell me that they think they're pretty sure they can get a contract, which I believe is the same contractor that's building the new jail. They're gonna move them right in there to do the refurbishment, is what I, I believe, so that it will happen quickly, and I'll get you guys in there next year sometime, yeah. And then, uh, the other thing is, uh, and I don't understand designated parking thing, uh, but apparently that's on the south side of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere, yeah, you're gonna get some, and a sign, which I requested too, so you can get a sign made for the front of the building, so it says I have to be, be in there, we'll get that, so. Any other business, or do you wanna talk about the Kutaska thing, or what do you, what do you do with that?
Well, I don't think we can move forward with that at all until we find out if the council goes forward with this
Yeah.
agreement on A eighteen, if not, then we wouldn't bring that back for consideration, otherwise...
So do you wanna move, do we wanna put this table this, or?
I, I would ask to table it to the next committee.
I won't have to table.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll table the Kutaska plan update for now. Uh, Airport Commissioner, Commission, Counselor Holden, and you can use that.
Oh, goodness, um, we had such good news, the study was done for the airport, and I attended here, and we have the study brought before us. And all, our operation, our airport commission and our airport, they recommended a few of the items where we could make some revenue, like getting back into the rental business of cars and stuff, and there's other options too, but the, what they told us is, the airport's in great shape. They're way, we're way ahead, we're just, I mean, we're rolling along good, and the airport commission's doing good, everything, financially is looking good. And it was like a breath of fresh air, I mean, to get a meeting like that, to get told that, and so, it's like a plus. I mean, you've been thinking about all the different things that we're dealing with, and to have and say, hey, you guys are doing good, I really appreciate it, so.
Counselor Taylor, do you have the key to meeting?
Uh, I have not since last one, but something I liked, and I forgot, that's last time, or me and the mayor both forgot, is that it sounds like we're in for another, uh, positive cold weather testing season. Uh, dates are already getting filled up, it's hard as the disbelief, right, but it's right around the corner, and like J-War's gonna have one, and some other, have that, more engineers here, that's here to look at stuff, and no matter what anybody believes against it, or for them or not, they're coming, they have, uh, put in a couple more fast charters and a lot of vehicles, again, they're, they're gonna be testing, they're gonna be electric testing. Then, for those that weren't at the meeting, when, when, uh, the Fozzy nearly agreed to, uh, sell part of the land out at the Multimode, the Felix and his companies, so they can hopefully use that to get some collateral to, um, get some more loans, start on the building, and he's already had people inquiring about what he plans to do here, so hopefully, that all comes together.
North Cooch? Counselor?
Yeah.
Hate calling you again, but I miss you, and I actually need for a while, so, a couple months or a couple weeks anyway.
Yeah, no, North Cooch, uh, is doing good financially, uh, everything's running good, the guys are working hard, keeping all the sewage lift stations going all the way out to the end of the road, out to the lake line and that, and, uh, we got a great crew that works hard all the time, keeping all the lift stations going, and it's just, yeah, no, North Cooch is doing great.
And I believe we're working on the update of, of reconfiguration of the border, or is that not, I don't think that's up yet.
That's coming up again.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I just have one more plug for the Elks Corner Broke Feet, it's Friday, four to seven. Down in front of the Elks, that's where we raise most of our money for our scholarships that we give kids, and plus, it's great to see all the community down there. So, four to seven, and for you going Sturgeon, fishing, the next day, that'll be a good research dinner for you, so you can stay up there.
Excellent. Any other business? Did you go adjourned?
I'll make that.
David? Counselor Taylor, second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any adjourned?